Public hearing to order for September 24, 2018 is four o'clock. We call the order. We've got...
I just want to speak briefly about our tax rate and where we are. As required by KRS 160.470-8B, legal advertisements ran in place of our Earl on Saturday, September 8th and Saturday, September 15th, two weeks in a row. And we're required to have a hearing meeting within seven to ten days after the last reading, today is day nine of that. In Johnson County, real, personal property assessment was $724,390,923, and motor vehicles assessed are assessed at $144,1,035. Total property assessment in Johnson County decreased a little over $8 million from the 2017 and 18 tax season. The rate currently proposed is a 4% rate increase, or that would increase the total rate to $0.54 per $100 on real and personal property. And that does exclude motor vehicle rates, though that rate does remain the same at $0.52. The 4% would increase the rate by three cents from last year. If you remember, last year it was $0.47 per $100, so it increased it three cents. In taking a 4% increase, net revenues projected would be $164,000 increase in the general fund from the previous year. But now that's pending collection rate, that's based on 100% collection.
Just to make sure I'm correct. So compared from last year till now, we're talking about just a three cents difference?
Yes, sir. Last year, the rate was $0.47 per $100 collected. This year it'd be $0.54.
Just three cents. Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear.
I put this up, and I know it's hard to see probably, especially in the back, but I wanted to show you our area real estate property rates. And I won't name all the names, but you can see starting here, and all of these are based on last year's rates because everybody's not set their rates and they're not public yet. But last year, an area really close to us had a tax rate of $0.94 per $100. And you can see it goes down, and these are all areas in our region. And here we are. This is Johnson County, $0.47, Johnson County School District. The next closest to us in our region is $0.55. Now, keep in mind, that's last year's rates. So if we go up 4%, we will go up to $0.54. So you can see, we would still be five cents lower on the $100 from last, and that's based on last year. Like I said, I don't know what this year's rates are, but I just thought that was a visual that would be helpful to see. And if you're interested in what the districts are, they're all covered here. And they go like this, is this rate, and they go across. Okay? So there's where the rates currently stand. Annual cost for a $75,000 home, and I picked $75,000 just simply because when you look at the data, Johnson County, an average home is somewhere around $70,000 to $75,000. We know some homes value less than that, some value far more than that. But based on a $75,000 home with a 4% tax increase, that would, the rate, the rate would calculate to be $1.88 more per month than last year. Also, that same 4% increase, the annual net increase would be $22.54 for the upcoming year. Again, that's based on a $75,000 home. Now, something to keep in mind, there are home state exemptions and disability exemptions. And so a disability exemption is if you have a disability, you live in a home, own a home, and you're over 20 years old, you have an exemption. The same applies for home state. The difference is a home state exemption is for 65 and older. So if you're 65, age 65 or older, or 20 and older with a disability, then you can't get that home state exemption, which means the first $37,600 of your home value, you don't pay taxes on. So if, say, for example, it's $75,000, and you have a home state exemption, you're over 65, you knock the first $37,600 off, and then you only pay taxes on the remaining $37,400. And then the last slide I have is why 4%. Why should we have 4% tax increase? First of all, I know that nobody wants to pay more taxes. With that being said, I guess in simple, in simple put, we have continued pushdown of financial responsibility from the state level to the local level. We have a rising cost of fringe responsibility. And when I'm talking about specifically here, I'm talking about poor classified employees. I'm talking about our bus drivers, our cooks, our classroom aides who don't make, who have, don't make regular money. But our district master of that increased this year 2.3%, which is an estimated increase of $91,000 for Johnson County Schools to help pay for insurance and retirements and fringes for the classified employees. Also, we have continued step in rank increases for all of our staff. You know, as they earn more years of service or more degrees, there's increases. But with that being said, keep in mind, our staff has had a total 3% pay raise over the past 10 years. Also, rising costs of equipment supplies and resources for our students. Every year, things get more expensive. Every year, school gets more expensive. We want to be able to keep providing opportunities for our kids. We also have a need for new school buses. As I've told some of you, we have 45 bus routes in Johnson County because of the size of the county. 24 of those buses are 11 years old or less. The other 21 are greater or older than 11 years old. And we want to make sure that our kids are transported to and from school safely and to and from their critical needs. Also, we have safety needs at our schools that we must address. We need entrances that are secure. A lot of our elementary schools, our high school needs new doors, new door locks, new frames, among other things. And ultimately, we've done more with less for years and years and years. And logic tells us that we can't do more with less anymore. That's my small presentation. Thank you, Mr. Popper.
Thank you, Mr. Popper. I think it was self-explanatory and very concise on the way that you delivered it. At this point in time, we have two individuals that would like to speak. And first one on the list is Ms. Sarah Butcher.
I've already spoke.
Okay. We talked to her. That's good.
Maybe all of you didn't hear it. She says, "I'd like to see this meeting at 6:00, when other people can come other than just two people."
Okay. Ms. Butcher?
Is it true that this money collected would go into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. What guarantee is there that the money collected would come back to Johnson County?
The money collected come back?
Yeah. From the taxes, everything, all the taxes that's collected, does it go into general fund in Frankfurt?
No, our general fund.
General fund within the school system.
Okay. I just wondered if the money collected stayed in Johnson County?
Yes, that's a good question, and it does give reassurance that it doesn't go to Frankfurt, where we have to like to get it, it'll stay here and be utilized for our students in some of the fashions that were mentioned.
I'm retired from Mayo. I was a cook. We do not make money. We work a lot, and you don't get paid for it, I'm telling you. But still, we haven't had a raise in I don't know how many years. And as you all know, the state retirement fund, they're trying to do away with it. And a lot of times, that's all people like us has got to live on.
We're on your side. We understand.
So I don't, you know, if the money's not going to stay here, I'm all for paying taxes and stuff, and I always do pay my taxes. But still, you know, there's a limit to what people can pay.
Understand that as well. Yes, ma'am?
Could you all, at the end of the school year, put it in the paper, what you all spent the general fund for?
We pretty much do that.
We run an ad in the paper every year that shows our expenditures for...
What month is that?
Is that different?
It should be, say, April.
April.
What month?
I hope it's in the next couple of weeks.
And it'll be, it'll be for last school year, what this one will be last year. Our months run from July 1st to June 30th, fiscal year, that's.
And why can't some of this money, I don't know if it comes from the county or the state, that all these drug cleanings and rehabs and things like that, why can't some of the money that's allocated for that, why can't it come to the school district?
We agree. We wish we had more funding coming to our schools.
I don't understand why they're funneling all this money, and all they're doing is helping addicts and not in a good way.
Yeah. This state has really made it difficult for a lot of school boards over the course of the last 10 years or so by cutting the funding, and they've put the burden on the school system, basically, to help themselves, where we have some legislators that have fought against the school systems on giving the school systems money. And it just has put a big burden in our costs and expenses have consistently gone up. With the reduction of state funding, it's made it very difficult. To your point, I would love for the legislators to try to fund more money to our school systems through any means possible.
And the money that, say, the cafeteria here makes and sports programs and everything like that, does it go into the general fund in Frankfurt or the general fund here?
Everything stays home.
Because when I worked at Mayo, they said the money that the cafeteria made or any event made, it went to the general fund in Frankfurt.
It's a state program. Our money that we generate here stays within here. We're not going to give them back. We're not going to give them back.
Any other questions, ladies?
Can't think of one right now.
If you have questions, feel free to call Johnson County Board of Education, 799-4530, we'll try to help here. If we don't know what we'll find.
Any comments from anybody regarding the 4% property tax increase?
I'm making a motion on 4%.
We just have a hearing.
I am sorry.
That's all right. If there be no other comments, questions, or call for a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We close the motion carries. We have a regular scheduled school board meeting at 5:00.
James, before we get started, as is becoming customary, we want to say a prayer, have a word of prayer. And today we have asked the family of our fellow bachelors, Paula and Brown, to come and start us off on the right foot, so if everywhere we could, please stand.
Dear Father, we thank you, Lord, for loving us. We don't deserve anything from you, this evening, dear God, but we know by your grace and mercy, dear God, you have blessed your school system, you blessed our teachers and our leaders, Lord, for the best of our children, dear God. We thank you for these people that have integrity and leadership to guide our children in this county, dear Father. Lord, you tell us the steps of a good man as ordered by the Lord. Pray, Lord, that you will be the overseer of this meeting here tonight, dear God, and we'll look to you for direction, and we never fail to give you all the praise for it all. We thank you, Lord, for our school system, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Dunham. We appreciate like the message of the meeting, or if you have to go, you're welcome to go.
We'll call the meeting to order.
To lead us in the pledge tonight, we have Matty Prater, 6th grader, Gately Elementary. So will us please stand and deliver the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Now for the reading of the mission, vision, core values of 5th grader, Gately Elementary, Emily Triplett.
Hello, I'm Emily Triplett, and I'm going to be telling you about our mission statement, vision, and core values. Our mission statement is to have an ultimate learning experience for every child, every day. Our vision is to have an innovative school district focused on learning, sorry, any boundaries. And our core values are, sorry, integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
We also at this time have a special guest with us to sing the national anthem for, so if you could again, please welcome Marlena Van Hooch. Please stand and sing the national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Marlena.
Next, we're going to go over item three, student recognition.
For our student recognition tonight, we want to focus on Gately Elementary. I'm going to turn to the quarter principal, Ms. Heather Butcher.
At this time, we wanted to recognize our 5th and 6th grade football team. Many of these students are returning from last year's 5th and 6th grade team. That was our, a big year for us. It was the first time that they'd won a district championship since 1990, so that was a pretty big deal for our school. And thus far, they've had an undefeated season this year, and they will play in the semi, or the second round, Saturday, so we wish them the best of luck, and we wanted to take a minute, recognize them, and let them know how much we appreciate what they've done for our school.
We normally like to get a picture behind the paper, I'm going to get one, so boy to girl, thank you for all you do for Gately Elementary School. We much appreciate it. Did you, Ms. Butcher, did you want to say the names?
Yes, if you want to introduce yourselves very quickly?
That'd be great.
I'm Seth Davis.
I'm Josh Parks.
I'm Dalton Matney.
I'm Ashken Scheppe.
I'm Ed Dyer.
Grace Martin.
Gabe Blackburn.
Don Fletch.
Ed Wong.
Ed Wong.
Ready, I can speak here.
Ben Lyons.
Ben Lyons.
Ben Lyons.
Kane Comes.
Kane Comes.
Thank you, Kane.
The next item we'll be discussing will be the Golden Eagle Awards. As many of you know, each month we give an award out to a certified member and a classified member of Johnson County Schools that have gone above and beyond, who continuously go above and beyond for the Johnson County School System. On a special note, the Eagles, very near and dear to me, they are actually, the Eagles made by a group of our high school students using a 3D printer, and they are painted by our art department and our retired teacher, Ms. Daisy LaMaster, so that makes them that much more special. And they are put at the base, the bases put on by Castle Jewelry, who are, Castle is our sponsor every month for the Golden Eagle Award. So I'll begin tonight with the classified employee. This Golden Eagle recipient is a 1978 graduate of Johnson Central and has been employed by the Johnson County Schools for almost 24 years. She has spent 22 of those years driving a bus in addition to her instructional aid position. During this time, she has worked with many children. Recently, she spent 15 years with Marlena Van Hooch, who leads the national anthem, and accompanied her through graduation. This lady takes every opportunity to learn new things to help her children. For example, she taught herself to growl in order to work with a visually impaired child. This employee has dedicated her bus driving years to transporting children out of the Chestnut and Hammond area. She has watched many children grow up to be successful adults, and to her surprise, now she is transporting their children. She tries to go above and beyond to help each child to the best they can be, and we're so happy to recognize this month's classified Golden Eagle Award winner, Ms. Nancy Lewis. Now for our certified employee, Golden Eagle Award winner, this Johnson Central teacher dedicated 24 years of her life to the service of her students. She arrives at school before 7:00 in the morning, doesn't leave until late every evening. She is the first to volunteer for extra responsibilities, whether it's entering ESS data or volunteering to work ballgames, a host of other things. She is dedicated to the continuous improvement of her inner practice. She uses a variety of strategies to meet the needs of her students, both in the classroom and for our home hospital students whom she services each week in their homes. She has served as K-Tip resource teacher, student teaching supervisor, and recently completed the Teacher Leader Shift Rank One program at UPAT. But what makes this person most special is that she is a relentless advocate for her students. She is the first to claim to kids with the least resources and the most disciplined referrals. She is quick to tell everyone that those are her people. She helps them find jobs, locates resources to support them, and is always available to listen. She supports her kids well into adulthood and never gives up on them. We heard one lady, one young lady say it best, "Ms. Link doesn't just improve my life, she saved my life." We are honored to recognize this month's certified Golden Eagle Award winner, JCHS, Ms. Dana Link. Now, if we could get a picture of the public behind the board. It is, it's okay, Christmas time, and Golden Eagle's not a lie, so you both go back.
They don't make it easy, I can promise.
Everybody's okay.
Everybody's okay?
You get the front if you want.
All right, there you go. One, two, three. Thanks, Ken, for both of them for your service.
Next, I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes from August 27, 2018, special meeting, end bills and payroll throughout October 20, 2018. Motion made, the motion's made, and seconded. Any discussion? There'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item five, renovation report, Mr. Adams.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Trevor Combs from CMTA. He's going to take a few minutes to kind of catch us up to date where we're at as far as our performance contract is concerned, and then after he gets finished, I will ask for approval for the payment listed on your agenda there.
So this will be short and sweet, so the scope of the project is fully complete and women at this point, with control of our next move, so we're requesting billing of final retainage of 5% considering project complete. From here on, it seems to be we're commissioning the controls the next couple of months to try and get those controls honed in as part of the measurement verification process. In a couple of months, I'll come back with a six-month report of where we're at savings wise.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second?
Save it.
Any discussion? There'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six.
As is required, once every two years, each school must present its school report and action plan. Ms. Patton, is that I can be with us now she's in another meeting, so I want at this time turn it over to Ms. Heather Butcher to present the action plan for Gately Elementary.
I appreciate the chance to talk to everybody, especially our board members, and tell you a little about Gately and what's been going on last year and what's beginning this year. As most of us know, test scores from last year are still embargoed, so it might look a little confusing, but most of what I'll be talking about tonight is last year's test scores and what we've managed to this point. Our needs assessment was based on the spring 2017 K-Prep scores. One thing that we are looking for was increase of and proficient and distinguished scores in every grade level and content area 3 through 6. Another thing that we looked at was exact path diagnostics, which is what the district purchased for all the schools last year. Within that, we were looking for trends consistent in performance grade by grade level, and, you know, did it match from, did the students match in reading and math, language ARs? Will it match this year for tracking last year's scores? How is that going to go? We saw a lot of growth throughout last year. It did a pre, mid, and post test, which we'll talk about later on in the presentation. Another thing that we do here at Gately is accelerated reader, and those students, we did a little different last year. Normally, in the past, students set their goals, but then the ones that had the most AR points at the end of every nine weeks got some type of reward. This year, we've changed things, and even last year, we started changing. Last year, we went more towards not necessarily how many books were read, but what we could do to increase their reading level, because in the end, that is the point of their reading. The ARs is the thing to get it. So this year, we took a step further. The students have set their own goals, and if they meet those goals every nine weeks, they're going to earn some type of field day. A lot of our kids don't get a lot of extra reading help at home, so what they get here at school, to them, is a big deal. So we want to let them know that's great, we're going to celebrate that. Another thing that we use is STAR, and that goes along with accelerated reader, and STAR is where they take that pre-test for reading, and then they use that to set their AR goals from that. And then I will also talk about last year's STAR and the ones that were above the grade level by the end of the year. Regance is something that we use in kindergarten, and it goes along with exact path, iExcel, Study Island. All of those things are things that the teachers use as formative assessments throughout the year to see how our students are doing and how they've grown throughout the year. Informal assessments and daily classroom observations are also used to track the growth of students, and a lot of that is used to determine the grouping of our students if they... they need RTI, any intervention or enrichment type lessons. Here's what we found when we started analyzing K-Prep, and these are presented as a proficient and distinguished third through sixth grade. In reading, we had 71.2%. In math, we had 60% were proficient and distinguished. Social studies, 80% were proficient and distinguished. On-demand writing, which was just fifth grade, and social studies was also fifth grade. On-demand, 68% were proficient and distinguished, and language mechanics, which was fourth grade, was 78.4%. So we were pretty pleased with that. For exact path, which again did a pre, mid, and post score, in reading, when we looked at that... So here you see, in reading, in the pre, we started, it's 47% below, the mid, 29% were below, and the post, we were down to 14% below. And as you see, each of these went up each time, so by the end, above grade level, we started with 22%, at mid, we had 31%, and by the end of the year, 50% were above in reading. In language arts, we see similar scores. We started below level, 55%, and mid, we had 34% below. By the end, 20% of our students were below, and this is K through sixth grade. By the end, if you move on down to above level, we started out with 14% of our students, mid, 22%, and by the end, 38% were above, and we had 42% on level, so we were quite pleased with those scores as well. And then in math, you again saw similar, and I know this one looks funny, but we lost some students somehow along the way with that one that didn't, I don't know how that came up that way, but as you see, it was similar results. We started out with quite a few below level, and as the year went on, that went down. You started with 6% above grade level, and by the end, 39% were above. Math has always been one of our weaker areas, so we were pretty pleased with that result as well for us. Some things that were celebration worthy and needs to go back to our K-Prep scores and STAR, 30% of our students were distinguished overall, 46% were distinguished in social studies, 47% were distinguished in language mechanics, and the STAR, which is also K through sixth, 40% of our students were above grade level in reading by the end of the year last year. Our SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, a big strength for Porter Elementary is Leader in Me. That's basically how we do everything here. We have goals that we want to set, we develop action teams, and every teacher, adult in the building, basically, is on an action team. We set goals, people divide up what they want to do, and that's how we carry everything out. Last year, we had improved attendance for PES, which was a big deal, because no matter what we had done in the past, our attendance did not reach where it needed to be. So last year, we actually won the high attendance day, and we won a few of the monthly awards. Another strength for us is the PTO. They have been so supportive in the last few years, but especially last year, we worked very hard together to implement a fall festival, which was a big deal. We didn't even know what to expect, and people were literally lined to the side, to the end of the sidewalk to get in that evening. It was amazing for our school. We have a very highly qualified staff, and another thing that we offer here, we have STEM lab for all of our students and essential skills lab, which we started last year, and that covers more of your manners, and a lot of Leader in Me, seven habits, things, things that kids don't really get anymore when they come to school, so those were practical living things that they need. And then another big strength of ours is our PLC work. Our teachers work together daily, they meet weekly on the record where they record stuff, but they meet daily where they're planning, where they're talking about students, things like that. Weaknesses, we do have 66% free and reduced lunch, and we still have about 10% of chronic absenteeism that we are working to fix. Opportunities that we have at Porter Elementary, again, Leader in Me, which I talked about earlier, another thing that is part of Leader in Me is lighthouse teams. You guys met some of our student lighthouse team members while we were doing this tour. So we have about 15 students on the student lighthouse team who do a lot of service learning projects, but then we also have a faculty lighthouse team that's about 15 teachers, and as I said, once we develop things we want to do, the lighthouse team members are over an action team, and that's how we pull in everybody from the building, so everyone is a part of something. Win is something we started this year, and it stands for what I need, and it focuses more with our fifth and sixth grade students. When they've been in a lesson that day and they feel they still didn't quite get it, and they might need some extra time in between for enrichment and intervention, they go to what I need, extra math, extra language arts, whatever. Genius Hour is something too, it's like an additional math class that they go through for third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Again, we talked about the PTO and what opportunities they provide for us. They do a lot of fundraising for our school that we could not do, all the things we do without them, and we greatly appreciate all their hard work. And then STEM, and Mrs. Cochran does that with all the students K through sixth, so it covers extra science, technology, engineering, where they build structures out of gummy bears and toothpicks and build bridges, and they compete to see which one holds up the most, things like that, and then an extra math class. Threats that we are still dealing with, of course, scheduling is a big deal, because it's hard to get all, you've got 15 home rooms, plus extra teachers, you're trying to get time for them to get everything their students need. Attendance is an issue still, and most of the same students that we targeted last year, we're seeing the same trends this year of them, and, you know, it's something you have to work on. Of course, funding is always an issue, and lack of resources, which go together, and then another thing that we thought, you know, for our students here, they have a lack of experiences, you know, they know what they know right here. They might not have been to the museum of late September, they've never been to the beach, they've never seen other parts of the United States, so it's a struggle for them. And that brings us to our 30, 60, 90 plan, the big things that we targeted last year. We wanted to increase our reading proficiency from 71.2, combine proficient and distinguished to 79.5. We wanted to increase math proficiency from 60% proficient distinguished to 74.9%, and we wanted to have 95% attendance overall throughout the school. So some things that we did for reading and math, they collaborated in PLCs to examine and interpret data among grade level teachers with the RTI team, leadership teams. They determined grouping for interventions and enrichment based on those assessments, and this pulled in people like Title I, ESS, the Unite Teacher, different ones that could do intervention and enrichment, and the students tracked their reading and math goals in student leadership notebooks, so they started in the first month of the year, they set their reading goal, their personal goal, and then every week, they get in there and they track how they've been doing. For attendance, we did a lot of stuff last year to try to improve attendance, and that's actually one of our WIGs, which is your school-wide goal for Leader in Me. If the teacher is a non-homeroom teacher, they partner with the class, and if you have a student that has been absent two or three days in a row, they call and check on them. Hey, we noticed they're out, they're usually not out, it's something going on, we just want to check because there's something we can do to help. We developed an attendance action team from adults and also students. So what we did, Mr. Fan and I, we met with students who had missed over 10% of attendance at the first part of the year, and we had teams, and we told them they're on our team, and my team had to beat his team on attendance. And by fall break, the one who had the worst attendance had not missed a single day. It was amazing. So we had that going on. We had student jobs, if they missed the most in their home room, their job became to be the attendance clerk for their teacher, because they needed to be here, she needed them here, he needed them here. And we also had a school-wide job that dealt with attendance, where the students tracked the percentages of perfect attendance, the daily percentage for the 94, and how the attendance did by grade level, and saw that when you came in. Students also tracked their attendance in their leadership notebook. At the 60 point, it was a lot of the same thing. Of course, we continued collaborating and analyzing data, reevaluating the groups of the students for intervention and enrichment for reading and math, and the students continued to track their reading levels and their math goals and monitor those within their notebooks, and the action teams monitored progress. For attendance, the same thing, we continued to implement and monitor the procedures and policies, and we started adding additional members to our attendance action team. If we noticed that it was a teacher who, we even ranked their attendance, and if it was one who we thought, well, maybe let's get them on board too, to try to encourage it. So we added more people to our team, which helped with them, and we continued, the big thing was we celebrated. If they had over 95% attendance, we celebrated somehow, and we made a big deal out of it during our monthly meetings or something like that with the whole school. At the 90, the same thing, continued to analyze that, and grouping of students through collaboration in reading and math. Students continued to track and analyze their own reading scores, and then they presented those in their leadership notebooks during student-led conferences, so they now, they've had ownership of that all throughout the year. For attendance, again, the action teams continued to monitor that attendance daily and monthly. Students tracked their attendance, and they presented it during the student-led conference, and then we had a big interview incentive for attendance as well. So a lot of our stuff, the success that we saw was student-driven and led by students. It's a very good year for us.
I appreciate your 20.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher. 56P, adopt appropriate tax rate of 52.4% of the variable tax rate of 52.25% of that within this COVID.
I would just ask the board to agree with 4% tax rate that includes honorations of 15.4 for appropriate tax and variable tax, so that's the same.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve, Ms. Chan.
Thank you. Your second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 5C, Ms. Gold.
I'd always like to take this time to remind the board that this is the final of the three budgets I'll present to you. I presented the draft in January, the tentative in May, and this final working budget during September. It's pretty similar to the tentative budget that was approved by the board back in May. Of course, we changed some of the overhead payments, which was a lot of amounts went up, and our budgets for kids that made purchases that you guys approved, might approve later in this meeting. And any contractual obligations that we've had historically, I'm vouching for that, and also statement rate changes that usually that we have in here, but of course, there's no rates in place for this year. And on the revenue side, our SEAC amount is $16,995,398. There'll be one more SEAC forecast that will be released here shortly, usually in the next few weeks, it doesn't coincide with our budget cycle for some reason. And I also put the 4% tax rate in there, and stepped back a little bit on air, and my call, because our MCO was going down, and I looked like... But if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. I just think the board should approve.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the working budgets?
So may.
Second? Any discussion? There'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 16, Mr. Burchett.
This is a standard MOA with our partner universities, provides pre-service educational opportunities for future employees.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burchett. 5E, Mr. Cochran.
The Kentucky Ensignments for Prevention or KIP survey is an online statewide survey that's given every two years to sixth graders, eighth graders, tenth graders, twelfth graders for the purpose of collecting data concerning drug, alcohol use and abuse, and risky behavior. We're asking the board to approve the MOU so we can give us our way to our students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6F, Ms. Rice.
I provided you with a list of faculty that I recommend share AR season five or four meetings for the district. I just think the board should approve those.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Student trips. Mr. Crum.
Okay, we've got street trips for the band, we have a football trip, so fall break, and then we've got the FFA International livestock kicks, so that's it for us. And then middle school, the Penn School.
Middle school has three requests for approval, academic team, all three are overnight trips, October 12th and 13th at Rockcastle County, December 7th and 8th at Edmondson County, and January 4th and 5th at Denver, for academic team.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve student trips? Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6H, Mr. Burchett.
We ask that the board create program specialists, one positions to middle and high school. It's grant-funded positions as part of the Eagle enrichment program that is doing actually so well that Ms. Wood and Ms. Davis is, are heavy up at those two sites, and with a huge amount of participation, we've been doing that temporarily for time with educators themselves, we want to formalize that process with these positions.
Motion to create.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burchett. 6I, Mr. Crum.
Yeah, this is just the continuation of our transportation cabinet agreement, the Kentucky graduate licensing program, they do the courses there, the library at the high school, and this is just the agreement that we carry forward with them each year.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve. Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6J, approve fall festivals. Ms. Holson?
We are asking approval to have our fall festival November 3rd, which is our annual fundraiser.
Thank you.
We're also asking approval on November 17th for our fall festival.
Mr. Young.
We're asking the board to approve ours on November 3rd, and it's our typical fall festival we do.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve fall festivals?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6K, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking for your all's approval, your all's approval on the technology activity reports, which basically shows how much we spend on technology and associated with the staffing.
Thank you. Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Next item, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Cochran, I've been looking at several policies. This is, this policy is a first reading. If you have any questions on it, as you read through that, please feel free to call me, and I'll answer any questions that you may have. But again, this is a first reading on our, on policy 9.36.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next, Ms. Holson.
We are asking board approval to apply for a Toyota grant to a right-of-way loan.
It is an agreement that if you approve, will help us in development of a mobile app, new webpage, and will allow us to buy all of our social media platforms and one-stop shop social media.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Some may.
Second? Any discussion? If there'll be none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Next, we've got Mr. Cochran.
I'm asking the board to approve AppsG Community Gate Mobile App Website Agreement. It is an agreement that if you approve, will help us in development of a mobile app, new webpage, and will allow us to buy all of our social media platforms and one-stop shop social media.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Some may.
Second?
Save it.
Any discussion? If there'll be none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Mr. Cochran.
As I did last year, I want to start going over one standard in my professional growth evaluation system. This month, we standard one, strategic leadership, which is about operationalizing a shared vision for learning. I normally give you a sheet of the things I've done for the month, I leave it on my desk, so I don't even click to your, that's a good one.
Next, we have the superintendent's personnel report. No action needed. With that said, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Some may.
Second?
Save it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Like to thank you all for coming out tonight. Be safe, and your journey's home.[1620.54][1620.54](end of transcript)